I'll just do it.
Okay.
That's, y'all can follow.
Fine by me.
All right, we're ready? Are we ready?
I'm ready, yeah.
Okay. It's just a minute after noon. This is Monte Sokup. This is the October 16th Special Meeting of Affordable Housing Advisory Board. We are going to start the meeting with Leah. Kind of going through the rules of engagement for the Zoom meeting and the regular meeting, and then we'll get started right into our meeting. I'll take role and we'll get started on the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. I have a few housekeeping items for this hybrid meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. Please remember to mute yourself during the meeting when you are not speaking. The chat function for this public meeting is disabled. All chats will go directly to me. Unless you are participating during the meeting, please turn your video off. This allows the active meeting participants to be seen on the screen. You will still be able to hear the meeting. When you are participating, please turn your video on. If you have any trouble, you can send me a chat. The city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. Now I'll make a few notes on public comment. When the chair calls for public comment, individuals attending in person should approach the podium to indicate they wish to speak. The podium can be raised and lowered, and we encourage you to use this feature to ensure your comments are heard. Individuals participating via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. Please leave your virtual hand raised until you are called on. Individuals will be called on in the order they appear on the meeting host screen. Please state your name before speaking. All comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you, and now I'll turn the meeting back over to Mr. Sokup.
All right, thank you, Leah. I'm going to, we're going to take role, and then we'll move on to public comment. So Karen Willey. Sarah Waters.
Here.
Nicholas Ward. Phil Engelhardt.
Here.
Mark Bueller. Christina Gentry.
Here.
Erica Zimmerman.
Here.
Dana Ortiz.
Here.
I saw you on there. I knew you were there. Shannon Auri. Thomas Howe. Trent Sante. Monte Sokup. So we have six present. Just say that that does not constitute a quorum of this board, so we will not be taking action on any items. But we will continue and have our discussion because other board members can watch this online and whatever, and they have the benefit of that discussion. So we'll go ahead and do that today. And then we'll close, wrap up the meeting after that discussion. So with that, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to speak? I don't see anyone. Anyone online that would like to make a public comment today? Use your raise your hand function if you're wanting to do that. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment section. The next item is approve the minutes, and since we do not have a quorum, we will be tabling that item. We're just pushing that to the next meeting where we do have a quorum.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sarah Waters, did you want to make any note of those written public comments that we?
Oh, you know what? I'm, I do.
Okay, I thought you might.
I'm sorry. Printed my copy before those were posted, so I didn't have those. So we do have, I'm sorry, I'm going back to public comment. Actually, I see that Shannon joined us. Hmm, so wow, now we do have a quorum. So everything I just said, ignore. So we will go back to public comment. So we had no in-person or online public comment, but we do have three letters that were submitted. I believe they all were supporting the HRC. Is that correct, Leah?
That's correct.
Application and program. So I encourage you to read those. I'm not going to read them out loud, but they are in the record. Okay, so with that, I'm going to move, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move on to approve the minutes. So I would be open to a motion to approve the minutes from the October 9th meeting.
This is Christina Gentry. I make a motion to move last meeting's minutes.
All right.
Second.
Phil seconds. Are there any comments, questions regarding the minutes? Seeing none, I'm going to close that, and we'll call the role of those members present. Sarah Waters.
Yes.
Phil Engelhardt.
Yes.
Christina Gentry.
Yes.
Erica Zimmerman.
Yes.
Dana Ortiz.
Yes.
Shannon Auri.
Yes.
Monte Sokup, yes. Motion passes seven zero. All right, now we will move on to item, agenda item C, which I'm going to pull up because I'm, let's discuss, sorry. Discuss Ahab Position on Permanent Affordability in Affordable Housing Trust Fund awards. So last week, we had we had a written comment that posed a question about permanent affordability versus 30-year temporary affordability, and pointed out the concerns with, you know, 30 years from now hitting a cliff where we're going to lose permanent affordability on a lot of these projects. Obviously, we look at those projects as they come in and as we try to meet the need of the community, make decisions based on specific projects. And I think this group was advocating that we really focus on permanent affordability, and wanted this board, have some discussion at this board about that position. So with that, I would open it up. Any thoughts or comments?
This is Phil Engelhardt. Being that this is my first time through this procedure, I'm not exactly sure what the end products are. For example, is there some sort of binding contract that's put in place for a applicant who's awarded funds for 30-year affordable affordability? Is there some sort of binding mechanism that makes sure that it remains affordable for 30 years? Does that question even make sense?
Leah, you want to talk to that, or, I mean, I think I know the answer, but you probably are a better expert than I.
Sure, this is Leah Roslin. In the low-income housing tax credit contracts, when there are Lytech awards, that's a component of those contracts, and KHRC does require reporting every year to verify that it's still affordable. It's also included in the City of Lawrence Affordable Housing Trust Fund agreements, that it will be affordable for the length of time that the award was based on.
And so that, and there's, I understand for the Lytech and the corresponding Kansas thing, that there's a reporting element. I see that. But for ones outside of that, I mean, do they still have a reporting mechanism? That they report to you at the end of the, okay, that's, that's fine. That answers my question, I think.
That brings up a good point here. Certainly, I'm of the position that I think we have to evaluate every project on its merits and not put a constraint that we'll only do this or only do that. And then also, based on what the need of the community is. Because if we need renting, rentable apartments, it might be hard to get those as a permanent project or whatever. So I think there's a lot of things that balance here. Certainly, I favor, strongly favor permanently affordable projects. But that doesn't mean that always meets the need of what our community needs at any given time. So I hate to put a constraint. So that's kind of my personal position. But I do also like the thought of, and we had one project this year that talked about, we're not permanently affordable, but we're creating a mechanism by which, you know, a not-for-profit organization would have the first opportunity to purchase this project following, if we come out of, you know, if we cease to operate. So I like, I do like those kinds of options, too, that give us the opportunity in the future to push something and to extend the time or put it into permanent. So I think, I think those are all things we have to explore as we think about these projects.
And I agree with you. I would say that if, if permanent affordability becomes a really rigid, you know, criterion, then maybe we might lose some projects that we might otherwise be able to entertain. So that's.
Yeah, you would lose most of the privately funded Lytech projects. You're not going to get those because of the way the Lytech is structured.
Right, right. And even beyond the, even beyond the Lytech stuff, I mean, it seems like it could be, yeah. I think we're on the same page.
Any more comments?
Shannon has her hand up.
Oh, Shannon, awesome. I'm so, I'm so sorry. I'm terrible at looking at this monitor.
That's okay. I think the other thing that we've noticed is it's usually the nonprofits that we put the deed restriction on permanently. But, but the other thing, and I've voted for every Lytech because the trade-off is between the number of units. I mean, nonprofits, we generally make a lower number of units for the funds that we get. And so I think it's just a thing that as you weigh the balance of all the things, it should be something that's considered. But I agree, I'd hate to limit our ability to bring a serious number of units today in, because we might be worried about something in 30 years. And so that's just my thought process and how I've always evaluated it is, it's a balancing of those kind of things because of the way those Lytech deals are structured.
Go ahead, Dana. You're, I think you got your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with what Shannon was saying there regarding the Lytech. We're not going to be able to probably change the course of that ship. So we need to work within those parameters. But what you said, Monte, regarding the kind of out-of-the-box thinking about how we could work towards having this of permanently affordable to encourage that kind of creative thinking. I think it doesn't have to be a this or that, but here's what we really like. You know, here's what would be helpful to our community. There's thinking forward beyond just the 30 years, and how do we make things more affordable for longer term? I think that should be part of our narrative.
And this is Sarah Waters. I agree with Dana, and I think that, I mean, the matrix already has the affordability and the amount of time on it. And I think, you know, in next round, it may be something that we consider differently. And, you know, and maybe we decide as a board to put more points to permanently affordable or to the, the application that has that same kind of piece on there after 30 years or after a certain amount of time that it can, you know, be sold or something to a permanent affordable, like to tenants to homeowners or something similar. So I think this is individual board members' subjectivity in weighing things. And then as we're deciding who to award things to, if that's most important to you, then you can advocate more strongly for that particular project because of the permanence of affordability.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Anybody else? All right, there was no action on that. I just thank you for that discussion today. We're going to move on to the next item, which is review 2024 Affordable Housing Trust Fund application scoring, rubric, and recommendation procedures. So I'm going to turn it over to Leah, I believe, to go through that.
This is Leah Roslin, Affordable Housing Administrator. I just want to run through this very briefly in case there are any questions. We already went through filling it out, so I really just want to bring it up, remind members that this is due to me via email, no later than October 30th, by end of day. And that as you are reviewing the applications, every application, every applicant has their own tab. So you'll move through, compare the application responses with the categories here. You can see again where to find the response. So for an example, population served, you'll look at the application, section three, question two, and fill in the appropriate score. Again, as just a reminder, you can hover over the box there and see how to quantify the scores. As discussed in an earlier presentation, I filled out, I entered the scores that were just, in my mind, completely objective. So for example, this is just number of years. It's a pretty straightforward score. However, you're welcome to go in and modify the scores if you think that something else fits. So for example, in this question, organizational capacity and experience, well, the sort of benchmarks are zero points, three points, five points. So I just entered three points here, but you could go in if you think, oh, that should be four, two, whatever. And then for other scores, even if it seemed objective, for example, population served, appeared that it would be an objective question. It really is subjective, dependent on how the applicants entered, filled out the application. So again, you would just go in and enter the actual scores here. Whatever you complete, and so that totals at the bottom for a total number of points. You can enter any comments there. And then all of the scores get put here. And again, these are just the initial scores that I entered. And then you'll put in how much you're recommending that they receive in awards. And please do a balanced, a balanced budget. So don't enter more in recommendation than we have available. So you can see the total that's requested versus the total remaining. These, it looks like maybe there's an issue that I need to go and make sure that it's carrying over. But any questions about how to complete the, the matrix?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. And it's just a note, I guess, to everyone. I, I was, started scoring. I'm not complete, but I started. And one of the applicants basically said they were serving one population. But when I went, when you read their diversity and equity section, it talks about serving BIPOC communities at a higher rate than the population. So in a way, I looked at that and I was like, well, they are also serving that community and reaching out to that community specifically in order to do that. So like, I scored them up based on their response to that section of the report as opposed to the box they checked. Okay. So I just encourage you, you kind of have to read, to me, you have to read the whole thing to under, you know, because they may have just not checked the box because that maybe wasn't a target or something, but they are actually doing that work. Anyway. One, one thing I noticed, and we all know that the matrix is not going to be perfect. It's just a tool, so. All right.
Any other questions?
More questions?
Cool.
All right, if there are no additional questions. Oh, Dana has her hand up.
Caught it that time.
Hey, Monte, thank you. Just a verification with Leah, please, that those who will have to recuse ourselves in the next section are not going to be filling out these forms back to you. Just wanted to verify that for public record.
That's correct. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Okay.
Christina Gentry, I have a question. We have quite a few of the applicants either present or on Zoom. How will we be engaging with, or if at all, with the applicants during this process?
Right, so you're just one step ahead of me. We do have, some of the applicants have come or they're online. And if we have a direct question, we can address them and get our questions answered, but they will not be necessarily have an opportunity to speak whatever they care to say about their project or whatever. They'll be answering the questions. So we, they are here for, they were invited so that if we have questions, they're, we can answer them.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready to move on to discuss the 2024 Affordable Housing Trust Fund project applications? If we are, we have two, I think, online that have to recuse themselves. And need to also note that Nicholas Ward and Mark Bueller have recused themselves. They did not actually come today, but they had reason to have conflicts. And in Mark's case, we just learned about it this week, that he has a conflict. So he brought that up. He realized what the situation was and brought that up. So we've taken care of that. So he actually should not have been here last week, but he won't be filling out the form and have a voice, so. Okay?
Mr. Chair.
Everything out on the table.
And I should also announce that, so I have involvement with one of the project applications as well. I have convened meetings for the, for the Tony Krasnick, Flint Hills East, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting, the family housing application. So I will not be taking any questions about the project applications. I have my lovely colleagues here. If there are any questions about the applications specifically or about the projects, they'll be here to help to provide any clarity in addition to the applicants that are here. But just want to make that known that I won't be taking any questions based on my involvement with that, those meetings.
Mr. Chair, this is Sarah Waters, too. What, what is Mark's conflict? I think that would be typical, we would know. And since he did participate in the meeting last week, I think it's important that it's stated.
This is Leah Roslin, Affordable Housing Administrator. One of the project applicants is one of his clients. He has an insurance business. Is that enough clarity, or?
Um, yeah, I suppose it is.
Okay. With that, we will start, and we're going to go basically in the same order. I would say we have up to about 10 to, 10 to 15 minutes per, if we need it. If we don't, we'll just move on. So we'll start with the Burt Nash Permanent Supportive Housing Project. So do we have questions on that? We didn't get answered.
I don't really have.
I don't really have, I mean, maybe it's a clarification and not a question per se. So what I'm imagining is this is a, this comes to us in, in a form of there's being property that was just purchased. And so I'm imagining if I could, it was located on Sixth Street where the old Motel Six used to stand. I drove past and I feel like there's still a for sale or for sale sign. I just kind of wanted clarity because I had noticed there's probably some legalities. I don't pick that sign up and make that sign to be non-existent because it's sold. But I wanted clarification on the location and then the property being bought, or is it still in escrow? Just kind of wanting clarity on that would be nice to have, just because I think this is a great project, but just wanted to be for sure that those are ink marks that are dry and, you know, the signed real estate is already out of any other purchase opportunities.
Yeah, we closed on that. Contracts are all signed, checks have been delivered. It may be that the deeds have not been finalized, but that's a processing thing. For all intents and purposes, we are owners and controllers of the property.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. And that is the correct location. 530 Rockledge and 2222 West Sixth Street. They're two separate parcels, but they're contiguous with each other. So.
Thank you.
Matthew, you stay up there. I have a question for you on that. If you're, okay. The project, obviously, and I think I asked this as a thing, but I was hoping to get a little more clarity. The project has staff space and therapy space and all that. And then it also has the housing piece. And I was trying to get an idea of what the actual cost of the housing piece is, and really with my intent of getting down to a kind of cost per unit, because that is a metric that we use.
Yeah. Yeah. So we're showing between 150 and, I've gone back, and we had a meeting last week, to potentially $225,000 a unit, maybe a little more. But that's kind of what we're showing on our cost estimation for the residential component.
Okay.
So I guess I would say probably between 200 and 230,000 is going to be the more realistic cost per unit.
And that's 24 units.
Yep.
And your, your best guess as to timeframe to, to complete? I mean, I know that's.
Yeah. We would like to have ground broken by fall of 2024. And if we can achieve that, then I expect that we would have it completed by the end of 2025 or early 2026. There are a few things that we need to accomplish before that, but that is our goal. That is our, our timeline is to break ground. I guess if, if we're really going by what we'd like, by this summer of 2024. But things being as they are, probably fall.
So I'm going to go through my math one more time, just to make sure I'm understanding. So 200,000 a unit times 24, that's $4.8 million.
For the residential.
And you're asked, for the residential piece, and you're asking for 450,000. So about 10, roughly 10 grand a unit. Okay. That's where I was trying to get to. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? I don't, we don't have anyone online, do we? That's a meeting member. Okay, if there are no other questions, we're going to move on to the Douglas County Housing Stabilization Collaborative. Hold on. Find my paperwork here. Any questions on this proposal?
I guess I have the, the same question that I had last week, and I just, I just want to make sure that I understand it. And my principal concern goes back to housing those with previous histories of incarceration and whether or not that subpopulation is going to receive the same opportunities as the larger population that the Housing Stabilization Collaborative typically serves. Or alternatively, do they have additional hurdles? And if so, what might they be? I, you know, again, this is way outside of my area of expertise, so I don't really understand.
All right. My name's Kyle Rogencamp. I'm with the Ballard Center, representing the Housing Stabilization Collaborative. So your question was about if there are additional barriers for those who have been previously incarcerated?
Right.
So from the collaborative's perspective, for our programming, there would not be. But please keep in mind that the Housing Stabilization Collaborative, even though it's been revolutionary for our community, for example, Ballard, we've been able to triple our capacity to keep people housed, get them housed, keep their utilities on because of this collaboration over the last two years. It is on a lottery-based system because the need is still so incredibly high. The only way to have fair and equitable access was to put in a lottery-based system. But someone who was recently released from incarceration, currently on probation, currently has a criminal history, from the collaborative's perspective, that doesn't change anything for us. They still have the same opportunity for access as anyone else applying for the program. They still get the same supports from the partner agencies who process the applications and provide further wraparound supports for the household, follow-ups, just making sure that the investment sticks and has a long-term impact. Now, I will say, from a community perspective, there, there are additional barriers. But that's why HSC is so important, because all of the partner agencies, gosh, I think there's between 25 and maybe 40 partner agencies. That's where the real hard work happens, is we're working with those households to make sure that we're helping them overcome those barriers. So when someone enters the, the HSC caseload, the beauty of it is they're not walking that path alone. They've got an agency to wrap their arms around them and help them find that housing. But from a community perspective, it's very difficult to get someone with, with a felony record housed. It is. It's incredibly difficult. When those applications come across our desk, you know, we have to take a deep breath, look each other in the eyes and say, this one's going to be tough. You know, it's the same when we're working with someone who, who has a housing voucher and they're trying to find a home to get into. The more variables that pop up, the more difficult it gets. But that's what we do, day in and day out at places like Ballard Center. We, we take on those challenges and, and we help households figure that out. But from an HSC perspective, there are no additional barriers to anyone that's recently been incarcerated or has, has a criminal history. They have the same level of access as anyone else in the community.
Okay. But then if it, if you move from the HSC into the more formal Housing Choice Voucher Program, and again, this is way outside, I'm just trying to feel my way around here. But you're moving from the services that the HSC is providing into the, you know, the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Are there hurdles, additional hurdles at that juncture that, that make it, I just need to understand this. That's all I'm asking.
You want me to take that?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'll help with that. So there are, and I think Shannon has spoke to this in the past, so I'm paraphrasing what she would have expressed. So when you have HUD dollars or some of those federal dollars or state dollars involved, there are restrictions and limitations to what can be done. And partly what this program has done in the past is provides the most flexible dollars that we have to get those people out of emergency situations, taking that next step and getting a, you know, Housing Choice Voucher or whatever. There isn't, there are more hurdles because there are those federal and state regulations that come with those monies.
Okay.
But not with the money that goes to here.
To HSC, okay.
So that's kind of been the, this is the most flexible dollars we have to get people housed.
Started.
Started.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I, I think I'm understanding.
Is that fair? I mean, okay.
You, you hit the nail right on the head. You know, HSC is not a HUD program, so we can help a household that maybe the housing authority can't. Okay.
Okay. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Of course.
I do have one question. Kyle, can you remind me the maximum that a family can be, or an applicant, excuse me, can be awarded or can receive during a year?
Yeah, the annual cap is 1,500 per household, and it goes up by $100 per additional household member. So if someone comes with a household of, of seven, their cap's going to be different than a household of two. And it, and it increases by $100 per household member. And, and that cap was put in place to just have the money spread as far as possible. You know, so many of the choices we make at HSC are based around just the, the frank reality that there's not enough resources to satisfy the need. I wish the cap was higher, but that's what we have to do to help as many people as possible.
It's $1,500 annually.
Annual.
With $100 per individual on top of that, so.
Correct, correct. And, and just to give that some historical perspective, before the HSC collaborative had been put together, the annual caps in the community at each siloed nonprofit was, you know, between $200 and $500 per agency. So HSC has really dramatically increased the accessibility of resources, even though it's still not enough. But we went from that 200 to that 1,500, and that, that's huge. And it's because of, you know, the funding of, of entities like the City of Lawrence.
Okay. Thanks.
Kyle, I had a question.
Yeah.
Thank you for your speaking to something that we understand is very important. Though we're talking about affordable housing, we also have to be admitting that need of immediate housing and services. And I think historically, we've talked about what, what does that mean? Is this our job or our allotment to provide services or provide rental assistance? Could that be provided in another outlet? But I don't feel like it's going to change because the need is still, still very dire. I would like to have more information about the lottery process. Gabby did a really great explanation about how the lottery is chosen and, but based upon need. And I feel like I had a good understanding based upon their answer. It's a need and equitable practice in deciding whom receives it. Is this an individual lottery process or this is an organization? So say Ballard didn't get monies last go-round because we had maybe, not we, but the lottery process gave money to Family Promise or whoever's next on that list. How is the lottery process worked in between the HSC in a way that is knowing who's next to receive? Is that, is that a process within the organization or is it on an individual level where the independent persons and families need the money or they get chosen?
Yeah.
Help me understand that process.
Yeah, yeah. So it is not on an agency level. It is on an individual level. We, we try to empower the applicants to have as much control over the process as possible. So their individual household need is what drives that lottery system. And then they also get to choose which agency they want to work, work with on the backend to process that application if they are selected. The whole goal is to make sure the application is completely transparent and accessible community-wide. Anyone can go down to the library, hop on a computer and apply for HSC funding. You don't have to go to an agency. You don't have to, you know, jump through their hoops. You can just apply yourself. You can provide your supporting documents. And then you choose the agency you want to have the relationship with, which I think was really smart for the collaborative to do. We only process applications from folks in the community that have chosen Ballard to be their advocate through the process. And at Ballard, we take a lot of pride in the fact that a lot of households choose us. It just goes back to where, where is the most comfortable relationship for that household? And they get to decide. And then after the applications are selected, then it would be kicked over to us saying, hey, here's the 20 applications that want to work with Ballard. And then we start rocking and rolling and doing that, working on that caseload. And then we follow up every two weeks for a three-month period, wrapping resources around them. And then we do a six-month and an annual follow-up. So we want to make sure that investment sticks and has the greatest impact.
Thank you.
Of course. Okay.
This is Sarah Waters. I have another question about the lottery. In my notes from last week, I have that it was stated that non-white households are receiving funds through the lottery at a greater rate. And part of it is because there's a prioritization process that's weighting them in order to receive, it's weighting their application is how I understood that. Is there, is there anything else being weighted in that application?
Yeah. So if someone is going through the eviction process, papers have been filed, they're going through the court process, they are given higher prioritization. You know, we've noticed this year that the caseload of evictions at the courthouse is far beyond what it reached last year. We're still in that kind of post-COVID. I think landlords are still upset about the fact that they weren't allowed to evict for a very long time. And we're still feeling the after effect of that. A lot of landlords are now in a position where they're like, you know, I've, I've spent the past three years putting other people's needs ahead of mine, and now it's my time. And, and we can respect that. And we can acknowledge that while still advocating for our clients and, and trying to help them climb up that mountain.
So is that prioritization for that available anywhere? Is how, what, how you're prioritizing or what?
Like, is it?
Yeah, is it public?
Is it public? You know, I'd have to check the website. Everything that our communications work group through HSC does gets put on the website. And I can talk to Gabby. I'm not 100% sure that it's public. Yeah.
I think it's really important from a transparency lens that that is. And that the organizations that are contributing to the decision-making have that out there so people can see what the values are and where the, where the funds are going. I do support that. I support that weighting. I think it is important in order to get to households that are at a greater rate of eviction. I mean, back to Phil's questions around people that have come out of incarceration. I think there's, and we know that there's more risk there. And so, but I do think from a transparency, that's important for you all to make sure it's out there, whether or not everybody likes it or not, is absolutely right.
No, no.
It's absolutely the, the thing that's going to be, I think, probably contested or, or talked about.
And, and I completely agree with you. I'm going to check out the website when I get done.
Thank you. Are you asking, I'm sorry, I guess I'm cross-talking, but cross-asking. Are you asking for a survey of the households that they have prioritized? Or are you asking for a list of?
The weighting criteria on the lottery.
Okay.
Yeah.
So like he said, eviction, people under eviction are weighted higher and have a better chance of being selected in the lottery, right?
Right.
So what other things are you weighting?
Yeah.
Okay.
And at what rate?
At what levels?
At what level are you weighting?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's what the, to what you would want, that's what I would want to see.
Yeah. And, and I know a lot of the choices are modeled after research done with similar-sized communities with, you know, similar sets of issues. I don't think we have any issue publicizing that if we're not already. I'll hop on the website and see how visible that information is. And if it isn't, I'll, I'll talk with Gabby and we'll get it up there. Ballard just so happens to lead up the communications work group, so easy peasy. But I appreciate that insight because you're exactly right. That information should be public if it isn't already.
Right. We kind of need to keep moving. If, as soon as somebody has something burning, make room for it. Okay. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for being here, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, this is Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority. This is the New Horizons Pro, Project. There are housing vouchers for people coming out of the shelter, basically, families coming out of the shelter. Have any questions on those?
This, this is all fam, 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 I didn't realize.
I believe this is all primarily families with minor children.
New Horizon program?
Yeah.
Jumped, he's jumped down.
Did I skip something?
Yeah, you skipped some. We're, we're keeping you in line here, Mr. Chair.
I need it. There's no doubt about that. This is, isn't this Douglas?
Yeah.
County Housing Stabilization.
That's what we just talked.
Oh.
Yeah.
Now we're.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I picked up the wrong one. I'm sorry. I picked up the wrong one. Scratch that. We're going to move to Flint Hills, East Heights Family Housing.
Back in order.
Sorry. Thank you for, somebody's got to wrangle me.
You're going to want us on Zoom again next time, aren't you?
Be careful, you'll be the chair.
That's right.
Actually, I bet it.
Okay. Hold on, I'm going to get to my paperwork. Okay. Man. All right. Flint Hills, uh, fam, or East Heights, yeah, Family Housing Project. All right. Questions?
I don't, I don't know if this is really a question, but I, I think that I'd like to reiterate my comment again, one of my comments anyway, and that is that it wasn't at all clear to me, you know, what mechanism was going to be used to assure permanent affordability. I mean, the applicant is advertising permanent affordability, but I didn't get the feeling that, that it was very well rounded out. And I know there's a lot of uncertainties, but, but I just wanted to bring that up again because it, it's, I find it a little bothersome.
Phil, I'm in the same boat.
Good.
As you, uh, in not understanding which pieces were going to be marketed and ultimately, or, you know, affordable for a certain number of years, sold. I didn't understand all that and how that was going to work.
I do, I do. And.
So I don't, I don't know if we could get clarification, even written clarification after this from the applicant. As the, you know, they said there were going to be single-family homes that were going to be rentals for a certain amount of time and then sold into permanent affordability and.
That's what I understood.
And.
Fifteen years.
Yeah. Right. 15 plus 15 is what I got there. But I'm.
Is your question?
If we're subsidizing that, I, that's an odd deal that you would subsidize that and then have that rental for a certain amount of time and then sell it at market. We've essentially subsidized a market sale plus the lift over 15 years of the increase in valuation. So I'm, that concerns me that there's not some definition of it'll be sold and the subsidy will be realized at the point of sale.
Did he say at market, though? I guess.
He didn't, but it doesn't, doesn't not say that either.
He does not say that.
True. Yeah, but when he.
That was my concern.
I, of course, don't want to put words in his mouth.
Right, right.
But when he mentioned using the parameters that KHRC has for the homeownership process and then working with a nonprofit.
Right.
To utilize that vehicle to keep it affordable was my understanding, but I, some clarification would be good, but.
Yeah, I think.
Maybe because I understand that process, that's what we do, so.
I'm just saying, there's not enough definition there for me to go, I understand that and I like it, or I don't like it.
Yeah. But part of that, too, is it depends on the nonprofit structure that you work with for that vehicle. For instance, Habitat has a different vehicle for long-term affordability than tenants to homeowners.
Right.
So that might be also the, the piece that's up in the air.
Right.
It'll depend on who that organization is with, but yes.
And I just think that needs to be defined before we give it, get, I would feel more comfortable having a better understanding of that before we grant it.
Yes. And I, and I hate to be cynical and skeptical, but in, in the boxes in the application, there, there seemed to me to be links between, you know, 40 to 60% AMI or 40 to 80% AMI and homeownership and this ultimate down-the-road homeownership. And I can't imagine, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but, but I can't imagine how 40% of AMI is going to be, is going to realize homeownership.
Well, that's why programs like Habitat exist, because we work with families that are predominantly under 40% AMI that are able to realize homeownership. And it all comes in affordable mortgage for the Habitat piece and subsidy. So it's possible. That's why programs exist like tenants to homeowners and Habitat. So it's possible.
Okay. Okay, because I, okay. I, I, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and there's a lot of things I really love about this project. I mean, the childcare concept, there's just a lot of really great things about this concept. I just want, I just want more meat on the bone to.
Can I say one more curmudgeonly thing?
Sure. Phil.
Yeah. The, uh, you know, you read in the Lawrence Journal World yesterday that the school district is now projecting that they're going to lose 300 students, or they're down 300 students. And as a senior on a fixed income, when property taxes continue to escalate, not that we can't afford to pay them, but as, there are many people who can't. And as property taxes continue to escalate and the school district mill levy continues to rise, you have to ask yourself the question, you know, should the school district be looking first and foremost at, at selling that parcel of property for highest and best use? I mean, it's a philosophical question.
I can answer that, probably.
Okay.
So the school district does have to go through the state disposition, you know.
Right.
Process. So that is a bidding, an open bidding process. So they will sell it to the highest bidder. I'm assuming they have some kind of reserve, but I don't know that.
But the, the, the valuation on currently exempt property, yes, once, once, once you come up with a number, then you have to go through the bidding process.
Right.
But the, the valuation on currently exempt property remains unknown at this point in time.
I don't understand why you'd say that. I mean, you can go get an appraisal.
And, and I.
Any parcel in town based on comparable properties that has nothing to do with.
One minute.
Whether they're exempt or non-exempt.
Who's going to do the appraisal?
Why would it? Working for a not-for-profit, I do this on some regular basis.
Okay.
And we go out and get a, an appraise, like a local appraiser to do an appraisal, and you get comparable properties, and it has nothing to do with whether they're owned by taxable entities or non-taxable entities.
I don't want to get too deep in the woods. I was just trying to be, you know, I'm concerned.
They should, they should be selling it at whatever the market will bear.
At highest and best use.
Right.
In, in my.
Potential use, yes. Highest and best potential use. Yeah. No, I agree with that 100%.
Okay.
How they go about that.
That's in the weeds stuff.
In the weeds, okay. Yeah, so they don't. I don't know. Do they con, I didn't remember. Do they control this property yet or have an op, they don't have, they, because they're buying it from the school district?
Mm-hmm.
And this is, okay. Okay. Other questions? Sorry. Phil and I kind of.
I'm sorry.
Went off on a tangent. I'm sorry for that.
And I let it, and I apologize.
I'm hoping, this is not even a question, but I'm hoping this is one of those opportunities where they build it, it will come. I know sometimes we looking at commodities and we have to like balance that, and I know Tony's kind of in that space. But, you know, this is such a great opportunity. I hope that there's more access to resources and commodities that are needed, right? Like when they use just food as a resource or dollars in general, I'm thinking, oh, we could do better. And hopefully this will be more of a push and persuasion to get some of those things in this food desert area that are needed. So that's just my two cents there.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we've asked for more creative projects, and we got one.
You got one.
So, you know, there is that.
Yep.
Okay. Any more on that? Okay. Now, Flint Hills, New Hampshire, Street Lofts. Okay. Questions on this?
I didn't ask the applicant specifically last week, but I was a little surprised that they didn't check the box for green insulation since it seems to be such low-hanging fruit in a, in a relative sense and, and consistent with, with Ahab's goals. Uh, just, I was a bit surprised by that.
I was confused that their budget says that their ask is 450,000, but the amount requested says 300,000.
Right.
But maybe that was just a typo.
Well, I just, a couple of things to note. We, this project was awarded previously some funds. Is that, I think it's, I got the right project.
Yep.
Oh, I see.
He said, you know.
That makes sense.
The applicant said that, you know, the costs have gone up, and they have. I'm not, nobody's denying that. But I look in their description here, and it has a rooftop deck, which I thought was interesting. Not that anybody should be denied something, but that's a high-cost item on something that you wouldn't, you typically see in a luxury apartment, not an affordable housing complex. So I just thought that was an odd thing for them to have that. Not that we should deny anyone anything, but if you're worried about construction costs, those are the things that you cut out.
Right. And Monty, too, I wander to, I asked about this being also brought up to the PIRC, which is the Public Encinas Review Committee, which I sat on and listened. There was some discussion, one, I'm kind of confused a little bit by this being senior housing, but then doing such a push to talk about the amenities that were 497 in elementary schools and parks and rec centers. And then so I'm thinking, is this a three-bedroom for senior living or is this for homes for children? I just don't know. I don't think anyone's doing any checking at the, the gate to make sure that this is the owner or this is the person who lives there who's entering only, but for three bedrooms and just for asking for seniors. I just was confused about that. I was also confused if there's going to be parking, because I think that was another question this applicant was bringing forward to the PIRC, which where there was going to be less parking available for tenants. This structure just kind of didn't allow for there to be as many units as parking spaces available. And so then I'm confused about, well, if there's families there, are we assuming that all people are going to be using the bus? Who's going to be utilizing these parking spaces? So that's just a little bit of context that was not brought to the application process here, but that's just a little bit of background info that was bought from the same applicant to the PIRC that I'm just doing that connections with. And, and so I, I kind of have more questions than, than I want to grant like a real understanding of this project and this development, not seeing it's not needed or necessary, but it's just the, the priority population and, and then this people you're talking about servicing. I don't, I'm not sure just how all of this is going to be formidable in the space of affordable housing for families.
I, I agree with that. I, it was unclear to me what demographics they were actually serving based on the application.
Right.
I, I didn't see it, really.
This is Sarah Waters. I, and I agree. I agree with both Phil and Christina, and I, I think that, you know, the, this application and then the one we just spoke about have incredible potential, but the application is not, is easy to follow.
Mm-mm.
And the ask is large on, you know, one of the two. And so that's my concern in, in leveraging our trust information. We shouldn't, we shouldn't have to try to figure out, is it a $450,000 ask or a $300,000 ask or to do follow-up when we have people who are leading, you know, trying to lead things within our community? And so I, I hope that future applications might be a little bit cleaner, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
A little more succinct and tight in the ask and what is being looked at so that, so that it's easier to follow.
I agree.
That's my comment.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you. The next project is Floret Hill? Is that, I hope I'm saying that right? It's not like French, it's Floré or something.
Monte.
Right.
Yeah.
Man, it's a tough crowd today.
They're hungry.
All right. We're going to relegate you to Zoom, Sarah.
Oh, Mr. Chair, don't tempt me with a good.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay, Floret Hill. Uh, this is the Wheatland application. Questions? I had one question. The applicant's not here, I don't think.
I don't believe so.
But I wondered if the, and I thought, maybe I asked if I didn't get an answer, if the commercial property that's part of this would be sold to subsidize the project, would be developed, and the rental income would come back to the project?
Mm-hmm.
How that whole thing was going to work? Because I think there's a, certainly there's some kind of opportunity there, whether that subsidizes the project or not. So I'd like to understand that better.
I would, I would, I would agree with that.
Mr. Chair, I do believe that the applicant is online. I'm not sure if they went to answer a question.
Picture hidden, because I don't.
Yeah, this is Kelsey Herr. My picture is hidden. It is not French. It is Floret Hill.
Thank you.
I, the point of us doing the commercial is really just to benefit our residents by having, you know, as I previously stated, for us to potentially have it be a Minute Clinic or, or a childcare, something that would benefit our residents. I don't know that money would necessarily come back into the project. I think it would be a kind of a separate piece, but it, we, our plan and intention is to have it become almost another amenity, if you will, to make it beneficial for the residents.
I had a question while we have you online. Hello. So out of the section four goals, I'm reading, there were seven, and which you've marked five as ones that you would absolutely checkbox related to your project and your output gives numbers. I had still a question about the increased community awareness and engagement and partnerships in affordable housing being, being checked, and then a number that was also presented because reading into your application, it says that your community engagement looks like, once we receive tax credits, then the work begins to community engage. So I felt like maybe a little bit more clarification about how you would reach that 500 amount in the community awareness. And then I'll just say, increased racial equity in housing, your answer was any qualified applicant, so I just, I'll just leave that at that. But the, the community awareness is really what I want to kind of dive into about your output and your numbers that you have here and how you plan to reach that. Again, if you could just kind of explain that to me.
Yeah, you bet. Our community output and outreach is, we always do a neighborhood meeting, so we notify everyone in the surrounding area. We have them come and meet us either at one of our offices or at our civil engineer office to notify them of what project we're doing. We let them, we print out our site plan, we print out our, you guys could see our floor plans and our.
output and your numbers that you have here and how you plan to reach that. Again, if you could just kind of explain that to me.
Yeah, you bet. Our community output and outreach is, we always do a neighborhood meeting, so we notify everyone in the surrounding area. We have them come and meet us either at one of our offices or at our civil engineer office to notify them of what project we're doing. We let them, we print out our site plan. We print out our, you guys could see our floor plans and our exterior pictures. We allow them to provide us some comments. Hypothetically, we have a playground that they think would be offensive, and I'm choosing that because a playground's not. If we have a playground that they choose that would be offensive, then we would discuss what they would like to see in that area. Maybe I misspoke. We do like to start doing our notifications and getting the information out there as soon as possible. We have not done a neighborhood outreach yet, but I know that with tenants to homeowners, they have already, you know, spoke to lots of people in the community, notifying them and letting them know that this project is, is coming. In regards to the, any qualified applicant, we do not discriminate in, for any applicant that applies. I mean, they have to, we have fair housing. And so we have to use the same across the board to everyone. There are, as Monty did speak earlier, there are some restrictions that are put on us in regards to the federal and state because of our housing. So we do not rent to violent offenders or things of that nature, but we don't have a credit score criteria. We don't have, you know, we try really hard to take it case-by-case basis and make sure that it's fair across the board. I hope I answered everything. If not, please, please ask me anything else.
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to beat on this commercial property thing. I, this is just my personal opinion, and I don't know if you guys could accommodate this, but since I believe that the property was donated by the city and/or tenants to homeowners, the income from that property, I think that's generated by that property should come back to the project somehow. If it's ground rent, there's something or whatever, but it's basically subsidy provided to this project that should not benefit a private entity. That's my personal opinion, not the opinion of this group necessarily, but I, I would feel a lot better if there was something, some restriction on that.
Even if that private entity was a hospital?
Well, that, if that were... Well, I don't know how they could, I mean, if there's fee title to that property, they're either going to ground lease it or they have to sell it for somebody to build on it. So you're either going to get income from a sale or you're going to get income from a ground rent that I don't think should benefit the private entity developing because that was a pure subsidy. That's just, again, again, that's a personal opinion.
I see your logic, and I agree because I think you're basically talking about double subsidizing.
You have a private entity getting the benefit of the subsidy.
Yes.
Not going to housing.
Yep.
That's what I, the way I see it.
That makes sense.
So could, could the ultimate agreement, what, you know, if they're awarded funds and so forth? I mean, will the agreement, could the agreement be structured to incorporate some notion like that?
Yeah, I think that's something that Wheatland would have to say, we're open to that or we're not open to that. I don't know how it's modeled from their performa.
Right.
Project. I mean, maybe it's modeled in their whole performa, and it does come back, and I just don't, we don't see that.
Mm-hmm.
That's possible. But I'd like to see somehow, see that. I want to understand that. Again, it's like the other project. I just want to understand more because I'm uncertainty about who gets the benefit of that. Okay. And with that, I'll let that rest.
This is Leah Roslin. Mr. Chair, I apologize. It looks like we might have lost Zoom.
Yeah.
We lost Zoom.
It just closed out, so I'm just going to verify. Kurt, are we?
It's restarting, but yeah, it absolutely crashed.
Okay.
I'm asking permission to relieve my body.
Yeah, do you want to take a recess?
Permission to go use a restroom?
Hey, you want to take a, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll be back here at 1:15.
This is Kelsey. I do apologize. I may need you to re-ask your question.
Welcome back. We had, we took a little five-minute break there. Our Zoom crashed here at City Hall, so we are back.
I think Kelsey felt there was a question, right? Being asked.
Yeah. Was there a question?
Well, I think, Monty, you were, you were still asking a question?
I was ranting on.
Yeah, about the commercial piece of.
Yeah, so I, I think what I was saying was that I'm concerned, or I have concern that the land for the commercial property was a subsidy to the project, either by tenants to homeowners or the city, and that there is a benefit to be gained from that land that it should come back to the project. I think it may, my personal opinion is it may have to from a legal standpoint, but I don't know that for a fact. So I hope that Wheatland would explore that with the city and figure that out, and we'd have some more definition. And that, and I don't know what that means, whether that, you know, if that's like a ground lease and that money would come back to the project to support the project or whatever, but I think, I think there can't be a private benefit from that piece of the subsidy is the bottom line.
Okay. Yep, we will take that into consideration and seek out some answers and.
Yeah, I think that's just some sorting out of what should happen there. So, okay. Any other? Okay, we're going to move on to Independence, Inc. This is the Accessible Housing Program. We've seen this project, this request, I think for the last three or four years. So, any questions?
Not a question, but this Phil Angor, not a question, but a comment. I mean, I, I'm impressed with the, the structure and the documentation and everything like that. I think they're, they're doing really nice, nice work there. I would hope that, that maybe they could open up the contractor selection process a little bit and maybe make it available to a greater number of small, local contractors. And maybe that's not feasible, but, but I think it's something that maybe bears exploring, in my, in my opinion.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? All right, seeing none, we're going to flip to the next. Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority New Horizons Program for the second time. Again, this is a project or program that we've seen for a couple of years. Any questions on that?
No.
All right, seeing none, we're going to move on. Ninth Street Missionary Baptist Hope Project. Questions?
One, this is a question that I'm posing to the, to the other board members who have been through this before. This, the requested dollars represent a very significant fraction of their, of the total estimated project costs. Is, is this something that you all have done before or are the percentages of Ahab input relative to total project cost in this case much greater than, than what's been done in the past? Examples of what's been done in the past? Does that make any sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody want to speak to it? I can speak to it.
I don't have recollection to answer that today, so.
We have had some other projects, not probably to this percentage level of funding, but we have funded projects that have funded more than 50%.
Okay. So build, build projects that have funded out at more than 50%?
At 50%, but not a lot of them, just, and typically they've been permanent, you know, permanent, affordable. Some of the projects just require high subsidy to get certain kinds of projects.
Right.
Certain circumstances done. This is an outlier. I would agree, it's an outlier. It's higher funding than, than most.
Okay. That, that was one of my, that was one of my questions.
I think that's actually a criteria in, in the thing.
It is.
As I scored this, I think they got a zero on that category because of the amount of funding, if I remember right.
Yeah, I know it's in.
So it is weighted, certainly.
The second question, comment that I have along those lines goes back to this, my lack of understanding in this nebulous arrangement whereby somebody ensures that if the, the applicant decided to sell the property, that there would be a mechanism in place to, to realize that the use remains as intended and that, that the affordable housing piece of it gets, I don't know what the right words are, but that it.
We don't lose the subsidy.
We don't lose the subsidy. There you go.
Yeah. Takisha, you want to talk to that?
Hello, yes, I can definitely talk to that. I had shared with you guys that we were put in a contingency place to do a 99-year lease with Family Promise, as well as if we ever decide to sell the property, which is not likely because we've been here 160 years, but if we do ever decide to sell the property, the first right for, right of refusal will go to Family Promise and also it would be offered to tenants to homeowners.
But, okay, Takisha, I'm going to ask a somewhat pointed question. So, so if the trust fund were to essentially fund, we would want that purchase to be, to recognize that subsidy. Does that make sense? So like, if we were, let's say you, in 50 years, you guys decided to sell the property, the $850,000 or whatever subsidy ends up being would have to be recognized in that sale so that the church, per se, would not benefit from the subsidy? You don't get the subsidy back because we already paid for a portion of the project to start with, so we ought to be able to buy the project at a discounted.
Very low discounted.
That recognizes the subsidy.
On our committee chair, yes.
So we would need.
We definitely discussed that.
So that's, that's what I mean by not losing the benefit of the subsidy or the private entity benefiting from the subsidy. So we would need to know that there's that kind of opportunity, not just a right of first offer or right of first refusal, because we'd essentially be paying market at that point, and the subsidy would have gone to the church, not to housing at that point, at that point. So I think we need some clarification on how, or I do, how that, it's kind of the same question I ask about the commercial property.
Yes.
In a sense, it's the, the subsidy has to stay with the housing. So.
Right. And we discussed that in our committee, our Hope Committee search opportunity, well, committee or whatever, and we did state that all of those proceeds, like, because we're not doing this to get any type of proceeds from it.
Right.
We're doing it as a mission outreach.
Right.
So it definitely wouldn't benefit the church in any type of way. It is for missions purposely, so you can definitely, we can definitely put that into contingency.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One technical question here, because every time my wife and I drive by, she says, "Well, where are all those cars going to park after you use the parking lot?" So have, I know it's still in the conceptual stages, but do you anticipate that there'll be an issue with parking and hopefully it won't translate into zoning issues and use standards? I know that's down the road, but does that question even make any sense?
Yes, and it's actually on the site plan already. The parking lot, we already got that drawn up. We talked to the city already in those meetings that we had. So the parking lot is actually on our site plan. So we have new parking spaces that'll be behind that building all the way across. So there are, we've already accounted for all of that to make sure there was enough, enough parking for the new site.
Okay, good. Good.
No problem.
Thank you. Any more questions? I just, I'd like to make a statement. This, I mean, we all know Family Promise has this great work in the community, and this is a known entity that serves the highest, some of the highest need and most at-risk families. So I just think that's a great, I just want to make that plug for them, I guess. So, okay. Last one, Prime Company Eastbrook Apartments. I'm going to make one statement. I think it's, I know this is pretty early in this project, and they've, you know, acquired, either acquired the land or have an option to purchase the land or whatever, but I think it's of note that they did meet with the community and had a pretty good-sized public meeting that actually made the front page of the newspaper, and they reduced the number of units substantially in listening to that neighborhood, whether it's enough or not or whatever, that whole nother story. But they did at least make an effort to listen to the community, talk to the community and engage them and meaningfully, and come back and change the project based on the input. So I would say that's a positive thing about this project.
And maybe we were reassured somewhat after the presentation, but hopefully there's not, in addition to the subsidy that they're asking through Ahab, that, that they're not going to come back and try to, to leverage the city for a lot of additional external infrastructure funding. You know, I am concerned about that, 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 you know, you're going to.
They had, they had done enough research to know that there was sewer capacity, for instance.
Yes, they, they seem to be.
And a few things like.
Pretty confident about that, so.
Yeah. I thought it was, another thing I found interesting about this was that they were going to borrow $15 million, and some of the other projects talked about the difficulty of borrowing.
I didn't see.
The amount of debt load that they were having to take. And that wasn't, didn't seem to be an issue here, but I thought that was an interesting thing I took note of. Anything else on this one? All right. That concludes our discussion period on Agenda Item 3. There are calendar.
Mr. Chair, I think it's important to thank the people that came today to answer our questions, and some that we didn't ask any questions of were there, too. So just, and that was a big ask for them to come back in today, so.
Yeah, no, that is, that is good.
For the record of this, because this has been really helpful, I think, in terms of scoring and moving forward, so.
Very good point. Thank you, Sarah. Sometimes I get focused on keeping this moving.
I know, you're focused. I appreciate you.
Pull the reins in there a little bit. Okay. With that, there's the calendar items. I'm not going to read those to you. And with that, unless anyone has any objection, we are adjourned 30 minutes early. I might.
Wow. That's great.
Thank you.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you, everybody.